Lead us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Chris Merrick.
Present.
Counselor Bean.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Beesaw.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Deena Tally.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Present.
Counselor Hay.
Here.
Counselor Joseph.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Tran.
Here.
Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on a matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing a public hearing petition, will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda to which you are speaking, if anyone wished to speak.
Hello, my name is Peter Lemay. We dropped off the packet with you earlier. We just want, with the waiver requesting that our right be tabled until the fifteenth, March fifteenth. We received a letter yesterday from the NICE Committee dealing with 148. We drew up our, what we thought were appropriate conditions for the permit, and we just wanted to meet with them to reconcile the differences, and then mine, the differences between them. We've addressed all the safety issues and all the work, and we gave everyone copies of what the rendering would look like, you know, fixing the issues.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Counselor Joseph's already tabled, and we do not need to take any action. Counselor Caddy.
The gentlemen are free to leave if you'd like. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Letter one, letter of promotion of Mr. Scott S. Gabriel to the rank of permanent police lieutenant effective February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen. Letter two, letter of promotion of Mr. Derek Sullivan to the rank of permanent police sergeant effective February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen. Would you gentlemen please approach to the center to be sworn in by the clerk?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take a note. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent lieutenant.
As a permanent lieutenant.
For the Fitchburg Police Department.
For the Fitchburg Police Department.
So long we go.
So long we go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Sorry. Sure we're good.
Now that's congratulations.
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 Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent sergeant.
As a permanent sergeant.
For the Fitchburg Police Department.
For the Fitchburg Police Department.
So long we go.
So long we go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do you guys want to take some pictures?
Yeah, we'll have pictures right ahead.
You can do it here. Yeah.
Let's take a couple pictures. If your family wants, we've got a few minutes. Your family wants to take some pictures.
Do you want me to work them?
Oh, boy.
Do you like a lot?
Oh, yeah.
While they're taking pictures, councilors, just to let you know, both these officers scored well into the nineties on this promotional exam, which is extremely, extremely impressive. So, just thought I'd share that with everybody that their scores were.
One more.
It's no conflict of interest, but his grandfather lived across the street, and his grandfather's serving as city councilman now, so.
He's making the Gabriel name proud.
Sorry. Yeah, this one's gonna be great, if I could take it. All right, that's the best one. I'm glad we got that in.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
His grandfather really kicked him out at racquetball.
Congratulations.
Very good.
Thank you, councilors.
Moving back to the agenda, communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Item three, recommendations for year forty-two Community Development Block Grant Program.
Counselor, a whole meeting coming up on March sixteenth.
March sixteenth. I have a motion to send the communication and the CDBG recommendations to a council's a whole meeting on March sixteenth. Motion in second. All those in favor? All those opposed? We have six letters of appointment and a communication at your stations from the Mayor.
I move that the letter appointing Mr. Zarelli, letter appointing, reappointing Ms. Elena Amico, Claudia Stevens, Adrian Ford, and Charles Karen be referred to the appointments committee, and item B, the recommendation on the zoning board, be withheld.
I have a motion in second to send all letters of appointment except item B and the corresponding letter, communication from the Mayor, to the appointments committee. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Communications, other, letter from the planning board to the Mayor.
Move the communication be sent to council as a whole.
Move that the letter be sent to a meeting of the council, the meeting of the whole. I think I said that backwards. Council of the whole meeting. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Annual reports, thirty-two.
Annual report, if the redevelopment authority reading be waived in the city clerk's office. Second.
I have a motion in second to waive the reading of the redevelopment authority annual report and be placed on file in the city clerk's office. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Report of committees, appointments committee, Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, the appointments committee met, well, maybe a half an hour ago, and there were three reappointments brought to the appointments committee. First was Human Rights Commission, Ms. Cheryl McGay Stewart, eighty-one Legro Street, Fitchburg, for a term to expire on February first, two thousand and nineteen. And the Disability Commission, Ms. Marshall D. Hannison, four sixty High Rock Road, Fitchburg, for a term to expire January first, two thousand and nineteen. And finally, Council on Aging, Ms. Maureen McSheehee, two fifty Mount Vernon Street, Fitchburg, term to expire January first, two thousand and nineteen. All were unanimous.
Would the appointments committee report, or you drop it?
Second.
I have a motion in second to accept the appointments committee report. I'd just like to acknowledge Ms. McGay Stewart, who's here in the audience today. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? It's unanimous. Legislative Affairs, Counsel Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Legislative Affairs Committee met tonight at six p.m. We had one petition before, S. two-four-one, two thousand and fifteen, of Counsel Angela Beesaw, to change the current ordinance to reflect the Mass General Law, Chapter ninety S. fifty-one E., create and establish an airport commission for the City of Fitchburg consisting of five members, plus the Mayor, the President of the Council, and the Commissioner of Public Works, who shall be ex-official members. We had deliberation tonight, we had the city solicitor with us. An amendment was passed, and the amendment is to strike the words "and" in the Commissioner of Public Works, and also to add the following, add the word "and" before the word "president", and add the following. The ex-official members shall have, ex-official members have all the privileges, including the right to vote, the right to make motions, the right to comment on other rights, but none of the obligations. Ex-official members are not counted as a member in the limited issue of counting a quorum. Consequently, a quorum of the airport commission is therefore three, but the ex-official member appears at the meeting, then the quorum is a simply, a simple majority. And that's the amendment that was passed by the committee and unanimously, and before you today.
Unless it is before the accepted.
Second.
I have a motion in second to adopt the Legislative Affairs Committee report. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the work that the city solicitor did on this. There's a lot of historical data. I think the city clerk and the people at the airport commission helped put that together, but it's a large packet that you all have.
Thank you, Counsel Bean. Special permit hearing, twenty-six sixteen, Zachary Fleckner, to renovate existing non-conforming two-family home located at twelve Park Street that has been abandoned or not used for a period of more than two years. To declare the hearing open. Counselors, you have a letter from Calvin Brooks, Treasurer, referencing the petition twenty-six sixteen. Read the letter. Dear Anna, this morning I reviewed the tax compliance of the petition of the four properties that I believe they own, twelve Park Street, twenty-six West Street, four thirty-five Rollstone Street, and one twenty-two Oak Hill Road. There have been no changes since I reported to you on February eighth, two thousand and sixteen. The owners are not tax compliant. The property at twelve Park Street is tax compliant. The other three properties owe taxes for FY fifteen, and will be included in advertisement in tomorrow's paper for a tax-taking on March eighteenth. If payment is not received by March eighteenth, the city will be placing a tax lien on those three properties. Please contact me with any questions. Sincerely, Calvin D. Brooks, Treasurer. Counselors, we also received the following correspondence, or the city solicitor received the following correspondence. Dear City Council, care of Attorney Poussetteri. Dear Attorney Poussetteri, in furtherance of our phone conversation this day, this letter will serve as a formal request that the above referenced hearing scheduled for this evening be continued to April fifth, two thousand and sixteen, in consideration of having, of my having just retained, as of this date, to represent petitioner in this matter, in order to afford opportunity to review the facts and prepare such representation, in consideration of the grant of continuance in this matter. Petitioner hereby waives any claim for constructive grant and suspends time until April fifth, two thousand and sixteen, in this matter, dated this third day of March, two thousand and sixteen. Zachary Fleckner, petitioner by Christine S. Simons, attorney. Counselor Deena Tally.
This individual owes twenty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and three cents. Based on that fact alone, I don't really care to entertain his special permit until those taxes are paid. And if we hold it, I'm gonna vote against holding it. I will only vote to deny him the permit unless we get a letter from him saying he's gonna march himself down to the treasurer's office tomorrow and pay his twenty-two thousand dollars that he owes the city. I kinda find it astounding that he would come before us for anything when he owes twenty-two thousand dollars. So, until those taxes are paid, I am indifferent to any conditions that would be put on this, and we can get into all of the other issues with the properties he has outside of this one, but the fact that he owes twenty-two grand, that's a non-starter for me. I don't care how long we hold it. I'm not supporting it, period, until he pays it. Thank you.
Is there anyone wishing, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Counselors, the matter is before you. If we wish to continue, the hearing now would be the opportunity, otherwise the hearing could be closed. Counselor Tran.
I'd like to see this petition be sent to the, delay the hearing, send it to the, to the date that was requested, give the petitioner some time to pay the tax and become tax compliant, because we don't know, if we deny the permit now and not give the petitioner an opportunity to pay the taxes, it really defeats the purpose of us not allowing the petitioner to pay the taxes. So, I'd like to give that grace period. Who knows? The petition may come into the City Hall tomorrow or the day after and pay the taxes. Thank you.
Counselor Deena Tally.
All due respect to my colleague, Counselor Tran. While I understand where he's coming from, this gentleman is well over a year late on his tax bills, and I think the city has given him a very long grace period. I would venture to guess he knew he owed this money before he applied for this special permit, and if he didn't, then he must be living in an ulterior universe. So, we've given him a grace period. That's why the treasurer is going to be, going to tax title on three of his other properties. And I understand that I'm taking a hard-line approach on this, but I really don't have sympathy for someone who's owed taxes for over a year, and he submits a special permit, and I'm venturing to guess that if he found out we were to deny it based on that fact, he'd be shocked and appalled. Well, sorry, not my problem. I think we've given enough time to pay. But, I mean, if we hold it, fine. All I'm saying is, if we continue it and we have the next hearing, first question I'm gonna ask this guy is, where's the twenty-two thousand before we entertain anything else? But, I think we've given him a chance. I think it's kind of insulting that he'd ask for a special permit when he owes that much money, well over a year. Thank you.
Counselor Beesaw.
Thank you. Counsel President, through, to the state solicitor. So, if a special permit is denied, is the petitioner able to reapply or put in a petition again?
There's an issue with the repetitive application of petition. I think they have to wait two years unless this body moves to accept it, because they deem the petition to be somehow materially different than the first one.
Okay. I mean, I agree with Counselor Deena Tally. It's frustrating, you, we want people to invest in the city, but we also want them to be responsible for the properties that they own in the city. I think for me, I would like to see this gentleman come before us, just so that I could possibly tell him my dissatisfaction with the way that maybe he's had these properties and he's not paying taxes on them, and yet he thinks that he'd like to, he'd like to invest in this property. So, I'm in favor of actually holding it and letting him come back, because I personally would like to meet the gentleman. Thank you.
Is there, is there a motion before us?
There is not a motion before us. Counsel Green.
You know, sometimes we have to take hard lines on properties, and I think this is another indicator of a problematic property owner. I know that the Oak Hill property has been before us in the NICE Committee for a while, and I think, once again, here's a property owner that's collected rent on all of his existing properties, but yet continues to pay taxes, and continues not to pay to the point where now the treasurer is taking those properties because of the outstanding lien. So, I'm not interested in entertaining another problematic landlord having an opportunity to purchase or rent out another property that is going to have problems. Thank you.
Counselor Hay.
Besides the twenty-two thousand dollars he owes, this individual has cost time and money for the city and their employees, the NICE Committee meetings, dealing with his properties, the treasurer and his staff having to take him to court. That's costs associated with that. That's manpower that's associated with that for somebody who's just had, showed disregard for paying their taxes. And yet, that person who shows such disregard for paying their taxes and causing the city to do additional work and time comes here and asks us for a special permit. I won't vote to hold it, and if the motion is to deny it tonight, I'll vote to deny it. Thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
I'm gonna take a different approach. I would like to give the guy an opportunity to pay his taxes, and then, when this comes before us, we will consider his other properties, whether or not, and what other issues this one would have. But I'd like to see the city get their money first, and then we'll, we'll settle up with the other issues.
Counsel Bean.
Let's make a motion to deny this permit.
Second.
I have a motion in second to deny special petition twenty-six sixteen. All those in favor? All right, anyone speaking to the motion?
I wanted to say something before you made the motion.
Counselor Boishman.
I wanna ask the state solicitor something. If we put this on hold, this petition, and we pass twenty-six dash sixteen, it doesn't come to us, right? After this, it goes to the zoning.
If you put it on hold because it's been filed, it's gonna stay with you.
It stays with us.
Then it's already been filed.
Counselor Hay.
I'd just like to follow up. I think that if we hold this, tell the people who owe taxes that they can file for a special permit, and maybe we will be asleep at the switch and they can get it through. I think we need to send a message to people that says, don't bother filing for a special permit if you owe taxes. Thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
I think what the message we'd be sending is, you can file for a special permit, and we'll hold it again if you don't pay your taxes. I'd like to see the city get their money. Then we will look at the purse and look at the other properties and decide whether or not we would approve this or not.
Counselor Tran.
I agree with Counselor Caddy. Holding this doesn't mean that we're sending a message that we're passing this. All we're doing is saying that we want the petition in front of us, and we wanna ask him why he hasn't paid his taxes. And who knows? From now to that period, he may be tax compliant. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Counselor Deena Tally.
I guess my hard-line approach is solidified in the fact that we have people throughout the city who pay their taxes on time, and we do not have a prosperous community. I would love to say to the citizens of Fitchburg who pay their taxes on time that they can also have a year-long grace period, tax-free holiday for a year. Okay? Because I've had it with these things. Had it. We have the water department come before us soon for a rate increase, and how much money do people owe the water department for not paying? I look at that the similar way here with the property taxes. Okay? Now, I get it. If we hold it, it doesn't mean we passed it, and it doesn't mean we're giving this guy a pass. I understand that. My problem is, how long's he owed the money? And he still does this. And I'm gonna be shocked, if he looks shocked, that we're doing this to him. I mean, what did he expect? This is not my problem. If you wanna have properties in this city, pay your taxes. Period. And I'm sure if he comes here, he'll play the violin on why he hasn't paid yet. I don't really care. He owns four properties. What's his excuse? So, do I not have to pay my tax bill for a year? I guess, I'm at, I'm at my breaking point with these kinds of things, because every year, we take more money out of people's pockets who are tax compliant to subsidize a government that doesn't provide them more services, but yet, for guys like this, we're gonna give him some leeway so he can come here and explain himself? Fine. If that's what the council wants to do, fine. But I will make it unequivocal whether we hold it or not, and I will tell this guy to his face that he can, he can dream all he wants about getting a special permit until he gives the money to the city that he owes. Thank you.
Counselor Deena Tally, I'll add, you know, while I, while I agree with your intent that, you know, I wouldn't be in favor of granting anyone a petition or a permit while they're not in tax compliance, at the same time, this gentleman sent a correspondence saying he had enlisted help of counsel, he was looking for more time here before us with counsel. I think, I think an individual who's going through a special permit process has the right to come before us with counsel. I'm certainly annoyed that he had time, and I'm sure this isn't the first he's hearing, that he's not tax compliant, and this isn't the first he's heard about this date. That said, I still believe, you know, it's the right thing to do to allow this individual to appear before us with counsel, feel that they're doing it the right way, before we take action, and give, give this individual at least the option or the ability to speak before we, before we take any action. Counselor Bean.
To you, to the city solicitor. I thought there was a city ordinance, something that if you were behind in taxes, if you owed the city money, whether it's taxes, licensees and that, you couldn't get a license or a permit or anything going forward until that's compliant. I'm just wondering how this got this far, if that's what our law is. You know what I'm saying?
I think there's an ordinance that requires the filing of a tax-compliant certificate with an application, and I think that I would routinely see those on a zoning board petition application. I was just, that's what I was just doing now, was looking for that citation.
I'm just surprised, you know, I guess with that law in place and hindsight, it shouldn't even get to us at this point, because if it did owe, it shouldn't, it shouldn't get to the point where he's, he's able to file with us if he owes money, is what I'm saying. But it gets to that point now, and maybe we should, in hindsight, look at it, so this doesn't happen in the future.
Well, in a perfect, can I just answer, if I can receive this question? I think in a perfect world, I think, you know, but I think there's a diligent effort to check the packets and make sure that they have the appropriate documents, and I think it's a little bit of an odd situation, too, where we're receiving petitions for special permits to go to city council, although it seems that it's all I've seen since I've gotten here, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
Now, Counselor Deena Tally, I hear you talking, and you talked about the water department, but if we read all the notes from the water department, they said they make money on people that are behind on their water bills, a lot of money. This guy's also paying, I'm not sticking up for the guy, but he's also paying interest on these taxes that he owes the city. I agree with Counsel Chris Merrick that we should give him a chance, 'cause even Calvin Brooks is giving him to the eighteenth to pay of this month. If he's not here by the eighteenth, then everything happens. So, that's how I feel. I feel like the same way as Mike Chris Merrick, that the president does. Sorry, Mike.
What's the question?
I have a motion and second.
Excuse me.
Yes. I have two counselors, three counselors waiting to speak. Counsel Caddy.
If the motion stands, as it is tonight, I will vote against it. But what I'm trying to say is, I'm looking to get this city their tax money. After we get our tax money, then we can entertain whether we give them out a special permit, but they're two different things. So, if, but the motion and the second stance, I'll have my vote against it, but I'm hoping that we can possibly take that off the table.
Counsel Green.
In the, in the, in the communication that we received just tonight from the treasurer, Calvin Brooks, it states that the property at twelve Park Street is tax compliant. So, there's no doubt in my mind that this petitioner knew that in order to apply for a special permit, the taxes at twelve Park Street had to be paid to apply for the special permit. And, I, I mean, we've known about this special permit hearing for two weeks, that it was gonna be on our agenda, so I find it a little odd that the petitioner isn't even here tonight to maybe inform us on why there was taxes owed on his other properties. So, thank you, that's all.
Counselors, just a reminder, too, this will require a two-thirds vote on any, any action.
Can I, just a two-thirds vote to approve?
To approve, I apologize. Yes.
And my concern is a vote in the negative. If it only garners one-third, I don't know the result of that.
Thank you. Counsel Bean.
I would remove, I could throw my motion to deny this permit tonight because of the fact of the concerns of the council surrounding me. I know my vote would be tonight to, to do away with it, but I understand there's some concerns among the other counselors. Respecting that and understanding the concerns that they may have, and the city solicitor's comment, I would then remove my motion to deny the permit tonight.
Motion to hold twenty-six dash two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
I have a motion in second to hold twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Deena Tally.
To what Counselor Boishman said, he's absolutely right. That's what, that's what was told to us about real estate taxes, water taxes, sewer taxes. If that's the case, then we should encourage everybody to pay late, 'cause we get more money. Doesn't make any sense. Not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying, by that logic, if you hear that, hey, it's great if people don't pay on time, we get interest on top of it.
If they pay.
If they pay it, exactly. This guy's not paying. He's got interest.
I would remove, I could throw my motion to deny this permit tonight because of the fact of the concerns of the counselors surrounding me. I know my vote would be tonight to do away with it, but I understand there's some concerns among the other counselors. Respecting that and understanding the concerns that they may have, and the city solicitor's comment, I would then remove my motion to deny the permit tonight.
Motion to hold twenty-six dash twenty sixteen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to hold twenty-six two thousand and sixteen. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Dina Tally.
To what Counselor Boishman said, he's absolutely right. That's what was told to us about real estate taxes, water taxes, sewer taxes. If that's the case, then we should encourage everybody to pay late, because we get more money. Doesn't make any sense. Not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying, by that logic, if you hear that, hey, it's great if people don't pay on time. We get interest on top of it.
If they pay.
If they pay it, exactly. This guy's not paying. He's got interest. I guess after a year of interest rackup, doesn't seem to be sinking in for him. You know, now, maybe he'll wake up tomorrow and he'll find a mysterious pot of gold in his closet with twenty-two thousand in it, but that didn't stop him from not paying for twelve months. So, maybe we should institute a new policy in the city. You pay late, and then you pay after twelve months, you're doing the city a service, because we get interest out of it. It's ridiculous. I get the argument, but it's ridiculous. And I'm trying to make light of the situation as bad as it is, but it just, you pay on time, because everybody else has to. Thank you.
I have a motion and second, speaking to the motion.
I share the frustration that Counselor Dina Tally has, and I'm looking forward to the petition being here and listening to Counselor Dina Tally looking on him. But I think this is a different case. This is a different situation that Counselor Dina Tally is talking about. We have a bargaining chip here. And when the bargaining chip is at, you need to pay your taxes and become tax compliant before you get this permit. And if we deny it now, we lose our bargaining chip. So all we're asking for is the opportunity for the petition to be in front of us and explain why he's behind on all his taxes. And in order for us to move forward with his requests, he needs to be tax compliant. That's all it is. Thank you.
Counselor Trent, I'd just ask that you amend your motion to continue the hearing until April fifth, instead of holding.
Correct, as amended.
Okay. I have a, do I have a second? I have a motion and second to continue the hearing until April fifth, two thousand and sixteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Orders, Finance, thirty-three, two thousand and sixteen. Order that the city of Pittsburgh approves the expenditure of funds from Mass Executive Office of Public Safety for the FY sixteen fire safe trailer grant in the approximate amount of eighteen hundred dollars.
Finance.
Thirty-four, two thousand and sixteen, ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the-
Move thirty-four sixteen up to and including thirty-seven sixteen to set the Friday. Second.
Can we hold up thirty-seven sixteen, please?
I, Counselor Dina Tally.
I'll amend it to exclude thirty-seven sixteen.
I have a motion and second to send thirty-four up to and including thirty-six sixteen to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen.
We got a communication from the Director of Board of Health, asking us if we could suspend the rules. It's a grant, and he has to spend the money down this fiscal year. So I request the suspension of the rules for two thousand, thirty-seven sixteen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to suspend the rules on thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. Is that just a simple vote? A simple vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion, if you want to be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion and second that thirty-seven sixteen be adopted. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Hay.
Could we just ask Mr. Curry to give us a little bit of detail on this?
Good evening, counselors. First off, I apology for, my apologies for not making the public session. I did have a board meeting tonight that ran long. The reason for the suspension of the rules, counsel, is simply because the State Department of Public Health is expanding this year's FY sixteen funding from one hundred thousand dollars to one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Presently, we contract with Luck to operate the opioid grant. These funds that are issued by DPH are ordered to be spent by June thirtieth, so it's sort of a, kind of a chunk of money that I don't want to be, have a two-month period to spend. The contractor, Luck, is here, if I may, he will, if necessary, will discuss what the extra seventy thousand dollars will do if the council's interested. I can also hand out what the money is going to be earmarked for, if that's what the council prefers. I don't want to take a lot of time.
I was just looking for an overview of-
Quick overview.
What the program does.
If I might, if I may, can I ask the contractor to step up?
You may, please.
That would be Vicente Sanabria from Luck. In fact, if you don't mind, why don't you do the presentation? That's what we pay him for, right?
Yeah. Good evening. Name is Vicente Sanabria, and I do have a narrative of seventy thousand that I would remark, and go through, as well as some remarks on how this will center Pittsburgh as a lead community in the opioid over the collaborative, as well as the town of Gardner.
Mr. Gardner.
Any, any questions, gentlemen?
I get a question.
Counsel Green.
Yeah. Will any of this earmarked money work in conjunction with the new center going in up on Route Two?
The new center?
The care facility that's going in at the Wachusett Mountain, or the-
Oh, Healy Hills?
Yes.
Uh, no.
Okay. So this is our money to use in town between Gardner-
Yeah, with the four towns.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
Your problem is, you're right. How do we know you're helping people?
We collect a lot of data. And in fact, I'm part of the earmark would be to increase our data collecting capacity, which is one of the items, collect, organize, and present some of this information in the Monticujus area. So we got a quantitative data collection, which we have limited capacity to do, being that we have a staff person that's on this grant full-time, and I'm her supervisor, and also qualitative data collection, which would include focus groups and key informant interviews. We, the overdose fatalities is a lot easier to quantify as opposed to the reversals. So right now, three of the police departments in the four communities are carrying Narcan. We have connections with the EMSs, and so that's the type of data that we're collecting. We want to expand that to have some focus groups and also key informant interviews, to be able to see the impact that a lot of the work that we're doing. So we have trained, I believe, about five hundred people on the use of Narcan. We have a training that takes place at the CHC, the Community Health Center, on the first Wednesday of the month, and also we go out to schools, organizations to train. We are, so we need to collect the data on those reversals, which is kind of difficult, because some of the reversals that take place aren't recorded. They're family members and friends that have been able to take a training and secure a Narcan kit on that. So our capacity to be able to answer that type of question, which is very important for us, will expand as a result of some of these funds.
All right. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just kind of quickly looking this over, and there's a section at the bottom that says the City of Gardner Youth and Community Survey. You do a survey in Gardner.
Yes.
You do a survey in Leominster, but you don't do one in Pittsburgh.
Yes.
Why is that?
These youth surveys, the one that we use is called the Youth and Community Survey. It's, the State of Mass does what's called a Youth Risk Behavior Survey every two years, and also the Centers for Disease Control does a similar one across the country. And it's up to the schools to determine whether they want to have a survey done in their schools. And so I'm still in discussions with Superintendent Ravenel to, our surveys, you know, the importance of the survey is that there's a clear relationship between underage drinking and later opioid use, as well as heroin use. And so if we can see the students that are at risk, and to give you an example, twenty-five percent of the students in this region, actually, eighth graders in this region are at higher risk because their drug of choice for eighth graders is alcohol. And when children drink alcohol, it's not like adults that will have like a drink or two socially. So we are able to modify the surveys to fit the schools. And I had some communication with Superintendent Ravenel about two weeks ago, and he has responded, and so we're in discussion. So the possibility does exist that Pittsburgh District would do one, as well as, well, Ethel does one already, which is why they're not on here. So it's up to the superintendents to decide. We're ready to go. That's why Gardner and Leominster are on the books for April thirteenth, and we're still in discussion with Pittsburgh. So that's all that I can say about that. It's up to the superintendent.
At least I understand. Thank you. I can't believe, you know, you hear eighth grade, eighth grade.
Yeah. And a lot of people don't know that, because a lot of people aren't familiar with these surveys. And so we at Luck, we've been surveying schools, nineteen school districts for the last eight years, sample size of fifty thousand, in central Mass. And so what we see is comparable to what we see nationally. And so if we're able to decrease underage drinking, then that's going to have an impact in the future on later opioid and heroin use, particularly heroin, which, as the prescription drug strategies are working in terms of decreasing accessibility, it's a different story to decrease accessibility on a drug that is illegal, being heroin and mixed with fentanyl.
I know the chief is here. I'm going to, either you or the chief could answer this. Are you guys on board with each other?
We have similar programs running. You know, we're more of in a partnership with the district attorney's office. We're going to be announcing a grant that the district attorney recently was awarded that specifically earmarked towards Pittsburgh. I think our goals are similar. We're taking a different approach to it. We're looking at the folks that are in the media crisis. They're looking more of a different approach to it. So I wouldn't say we're working together, but we're following different paths, and we hope to come to the same conclusion at the end. So we're more in a collaboration with the DA's office. And I think once we announce the grant and what we're going to be doing with this grant, it's going to be some exciting news for the city that's supposed to come out in April. But I do support this effort that's moving forward with Luck. We will be taking advantage of some of this funding source, because we're looking for different educational opportunities, that we're going to take advantage of this. But I see us, you know, we're both moving in the same direction, but we're not on the same path.
Thank you, chief.
If I may comment really quickly, we do work together with the police department as far as getting the medications off the street that are, we want to get them where they're stored, where those folks that are, the kids, for example, have access to. So we try to have people dispose of their medications and not leave them laying around the household for kids to access. So the chief, as well as the chiefs in ten other towns, have put kiosks in the police lobbies to take those medications back. So that has been a very successful collaborative, not only in Pittsburgh, but eleven other towns. We've taken hundreds of pounds of medications off the streets. So I don't want to say we're not working together one hundred percent, but-
Yep.
Counselor Green.
I would like to commend your efforts moving forward, and I do hope that Superintendent Ravenel is on board with this, because I do think that, you know, prevention is always a better form of medicine than being reactive to our current problem that we have. I would like to know if it would be possible to get a copy of that survey. I would like to see a copy of that survey, and I would also like to be made aware of the stigma conference for that. So, thank you for both of those.
What would be the best way?
If you could forward those documents, or through Mr. Curry, to the city clerk's office, who can distribute them into the council, that would be perfect.
Yeah, I'll do that tomorrow.
I'll make a note of that.
Sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Green, you done? Okay. I'd just like to add, you know, certainly my appreciation to the Mass Department for Public Health and the Health Opioid Abuse Prevention Collaboration, grant funding for selecting this region as a recipient. It's an ever-expanding epidemic for the opioid crisis, and certainly whatever we can do to prevent it, proact it, and better understand and analyze it, the better off we'll all be, not just for our region and our city, but throughout the state. So my appreciation to both of you, gentlemen, the Board of Health and Luck, and certainly hope wherever we can, that we can, that your grants, you can find a way to collaborate with the police chief wherever possible. So, again, my appreciation. I have a motion and second to adopt thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Orders, other.
Motion for suspension on thirty-eight sixteen?
Second. I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen, order to accept as a gift purchase or take by eminent domain permanent abrogation easements over certain parcels of land required for the purpose of removing vegetative obstructions from the airport approach service, which currently poses a safety hazard. Said parcels located in the area of Battles Avenue and are designated as easement numbers three, four, and five, details enclosed, and number two, temporary easements to enter upon said land for removal of said vegetative obstructions, reference petition two fifty, two thousand and fifteen, granted on February fourth, two thousand, and I believe that should be sixteen, correct? Two thousand and sixteen. City Solicitor Poussetter, I believe you had a, this was your request.
I don't know if the order is on the agenda for a read, but I do have a petition pending in connection with the-
You were looking to, I believe, amend the temporary easements and make permanent easements, or just?
Yeah, so I do have a petition that's pending to amend that order by striking the word temporary.
We could entertain a motion at this time.
I just reviewed that language with Gill and Associates, who's been managing the project for the airport, and they've been inclined to strike the word temporary. The concept of having the easements will be to permanently allow persons to go into the property and remove vegetation if it approaches the surface.
Counselor Hay.
Is there already a motion in the second?
There is not.
So we can entertain a motion to amend thirty-eight sixteen. Is that what you're looking for?
To remove the word temporary from section two.
I'm going to amend thirty-eight sixteen to remove the word temporary.
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend thirty-eight sixteen to remove the word temporary from section two, to read easements to enter upon said land for removal of said vegetative obstructions. Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Only thirty-eight sixteen be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Ordinances, twenty sixteen, ordinance that chapter one eighty-one, section thirty-five sixty-one of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh zoning special permit for non-conforming structures abandoned or not used for more than two years, as most recently amended, be further amended by striking the word city council and inserting the words Board of Appeals, final reading.
I'd like to make a motion to hold twenty sixteen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to hold twenty sixteen. Can a ordinance reading be held?
I think you should.
It would be to table, I believe.
Point of information, would it be possible to send it to a committee, so at least if it need to be discussed, if that's the reason they want to do it, or holding it on the table doesn't give you an opportunity to discuss it?
That's right. So a motion to table it and send it to the council as a whole meeting?
Mr. President, I drew my second on that one. I thought he was talking about twenty-one sixteen.
Make a motion, Joe, the motion is to-
Motion to table it and send it to the council as a whole.
I'll second that.
One or the other.
I have a motion and second to table twenty sixteen and send it to a council as a whole meeting? Is that correct?
We don't want to table.
Oh, okay, sorry. So are we looking to table it, or are we looking to send it to a council?
Council's whole.
Council's all.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, send twenty sixteen to as a council whole meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Twenty-one sixteen, ordinance that the chapter one eighty-one, section three fifty-six-
I'd like to take that one, hold, the same thing as Counselor Joseph, Caddy did. Same thing as Council Joseph, Caddy did.
Send it to committee. Motion to send it to committee. Council as a whole.
It's council as a whole.
Yes, motion it.
I want to make a motion to send this to council as a whole, too, twenty-one, sixteen.
I have a motion and second to send twenty-one, sixteen to a council as a whole meeting. All those in favor? Speaking to the motion.
I believe on both of these, I was, my sense is that there really was an opportunity, these, neither one of these actually came to a committee for an original part of it. I think they just came directly from the city solicitor, so there really was never a time where the council had an opportunity to discuss these, if I'm correct. They just came in, I don't remember having these on a committee. So, this does give an opportunity for everybody to discuss it once and for all, which I appreciate the fact of going to a committee as a whole meeting.
Council, just adding to that, I believe both were discussed as part of a singular petition from the zoning, coming from the planning board, and this was discussed.
Yeah, this came from the planning board.
It was discussed on, this hearing was held on November seventeenth, or no, January seventh, two thousand sixteen.
A council hearing?
It was. Yeah.
It's a zoning change.
So, just to clarify, there was deliberation on these two. So, I have a motion and second to send twenty-one, sixteen. Speaking to the motion, Council Beazall.
I think if councilors have questions on these before they go to final reading, I think that it's only appropriate to have it vetted out in a full committee and give it that chance for some people, if they have concerns, to voice them at that time. Thank you.
Procedurally, if these are sent to a committee and then sent back to the council, do they have to go through the reading process from the beginning?
No.
Okay. Council Green.
I would only ask that at that scheduled council as a whole meeting that we also have building commissioner, Mr. Lancia, if possible, at that meeting.
We will make that request.
Thank you.
And, Councilor, just adding to that, we, by holding, or sorry, by sending these to a committee, this does open us up for more special permit requests to continue coming through the pipeline to us. So, we'll certainly, I will do my best to schedule this as quickly as possible so that we can deliberate on this matter, but I did want to make that clear that there is a possibility we could be entertaining more of these special permit requests by sending these to a committee.
Commissioner Lancia is expected to be in extended vision of absence.
Is that power?
That's why he said.
I have someone else speaking to the motion. Is there, Council Cadd?
I just want to explain, when Council Green was somewhere warm a couple of weeks ago, I went to the NICE committee meeting, and as a result of that meeting, the NICE committee is starting to weigh in on some of these special permits, and I'm hoping that with their help, we could see some clarity and move forward, and maybe after a discussion, we may want to keep it within the jurisdiction of the council for issues that happened tonight with taxes. But the meeting went very well with the NICE committee, and with their help, we may want to hold this in our responsibility.
And the same token, Councilor.
Council Boeschmann.
With the same token, Twelve Par Street, if we were to pass this tonight, Twelve Par Street, when it never came in front of us at all, if it went to zone, if we gave that rights, the way I understand, the way you explained it to me, a single family and a two-family would not come in front of the city councilors or the zoning, they could move right in. They could have moved right in without, unless he gets special building permits, but he could have moved right in. Right, Council Solicitor?
Thank you. He owes taxes.
Council Dina Tally.
It would have definitely went to the zoning board if we passed this, and I can guarantee you, they wouldn't have voted for it. You got to say a prayer to get it through zoning board, so, thank you.
Council, I have a motion and second to send twenty-one, sixteen to a council as a whole meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Twenty-seven, two thousand sixteen, ordinance amending chapter three, section sixty-eight of the City of Fitchburg Code as follows. Delete therefrom a majority of the members of the Finance Committee, add in places follows. The signature of the Finance Committee Chair, in his or her absence, the City Council President has signing authority, and in his or her absence, a member of the Finance Committee has signing authority. Final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send twenty-seven, two thousand sixteen to its final reading. Enrolled ordinance advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move thirty-nine, sixteen, be sent to public safety?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send thirty-nine, two thousand sixteen to Public Safety Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion for suspension on forty dash sixteen?
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on forty, two thousand sixteen. Scott Ellis Airport managed to clarify and amend petition two fifty, fifteen by striking the word temporary and inserting this word. For reason says the petitioner was approved unanimously by council, however, the word temporary isn't in the petition when the need to make, when the need to make entry from time to time on the subject property to remove vegetative growth is a permanent right needed by the airport city property. I have a motion, it is before you.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second to, do we need to approve that, or is that the same? I have a motion and second to approve forty, sixteen. Speaking to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move your turn.
Counsel, just a quick announcement, I just wanted to take a very brief moment to recognize two of our colleagues, who over the past few months have worked very diligently to campaign and represent the people of the City of Fitchburg. I just wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge them for their hard work that they've given this body and the hard work throughout the course of the campaign to represent the people of this community. I think anytime people put themselves in that opportunity, put themselves in that position, they certainly, I believe a great deal is owed to those individuals. So, sincerely, I appreciate what both Council Tran and Council Hay have given, and along those lines, I'd also like to thank- I'd also like to take the opportunity to congratulate Council Hay, soon to be Representative Hay, for his victory in the election, and certainly look forward to continuing to work with him.
Mr. President, I would like to also acknowledge and commend the hard work of City Clerk Farrell and her staff. They're going through, I think it's three elections, the preliminary, then the general, and now this one, four weeks, so.
Speech, yes.
I think I saw fireworks going off where she lived after the election. It was like-
Move your turn.
Second. I have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? This meeting is adjourned.